There we go. Can everyone see that screen okay?
Yep, looks good.
Okay, like I said, this year we embarked upon putting together a capital improvement plan covering 2021 through 2026. And I will run through that really quickly. And if you guys want to just interject, ask any questions as I go through, that would probably be best. That way I can stop on the page or whatever.
Okay.
This is what we're spending money on right now. And what you see here is the Wellington Fire Protection District, and I could probably make this a little smaller. There we go. Our district encompasses 288 square miles, basically going from around County Road 58 all the way up to the Wyoming border, and then from Highway 287 over to the Weld County line. Some of the background and introduction to this plan. Since 2013, our call volume has increased by 70% over that time period. And with that being said, we first started to address all of our operational needs, more or less getting firefighters out the door. So from paid staff to administrative support to our volunteer and reserve program. And now we're into the phase where it's time to take a really good, hard look at all of our capital needs, all of our capital assets, which is our fire stations. And with the growth of the community, identifying the best locations for those fire stations from different deployment modeling. And then replacement of our fire apparatus as the use and aging begins to hit us. The goals of this plan are to improve consistent communication, transparency and understanding among the community regarding our ongoing capital needs, balance community and fire district priorities, seek cost effectiveness through planning and delivery of those assets, making sure we provide adequate facilities, apparatus and equipment to maintain and even enhance services, identify strategic service-driven capital investment areas and planned capital projects, articulate our capital improvement plan needs to prepare for future investment and leveraging opportunities as they present themselves, develop long-term CIP funding strategies. Identify opportunities for coordinated capital improvement investments. And then create a stronger link between the fire district's capital improvement plan and Town of Wellington and Laramie County and other regional comprehensive plans. So as you guys know, our cap- most capital plans are going to flex and contract depending on what's happening in your community over time, and this one is no different. First of all, we're going to talk about our facilities. What you see in the the upper portion of that screen is a concentrated heat map. What you see in the very center there, right about here, is our current fire station. And this this heat map represents the last three years. And what we're looking to do is move out of the core part of our town, or at least address some of the needs for response so that we have a more outside-in approach. Currently, we have two fire stations. We have the one that you guys are most familiar with in the core part of town right here. But we also have one that sets at County Road 15 and County Road 66E in the Waverly area. That's about three and a half to four miles outside of town. It actually has a very good response time through different parts of our district because of County Road 15 and County Road 64. The traffic and or the limited traffic and the number of intersections allow for us to have a little more rapid response along those roadways. What we're seeing within town and what we need to look at within town is where the growth areas are, where our call volume is expanding to. And then strategically, major north-south corridors and east-west response corridors. And by that I mean collector roads and limited intersections so that we can respond from the outside into the core part of town. Through this plan, we've identified some locations that might be ideal based on deployment modeling, and we've began to acquire those or put those in as part of our plans. What you have right here is just our current fire station and administrative offices. It encompasses about six lots and has a pretty rich history within this community and has served this community well from this core part of town. It's easily accessible for administrative services. But what we're starting to see is some limitations for emergency response out of the the core part of our town and something that we're taking a hard look at with this plan. What this schedule is, is a long-term facility maintenance schedule that we've put in place. And moving forward, for as long as we stay in this facility, try to address some of those longer-term maintenance and capital projects. Station 17, that's the station out in the Waverly area. What you see here is a strange-looking right triangle and with a little bit of a swoop in it along County Road 15. But that's the property that our Waverly station sets on. And here's a picture of that from County Road 15 and County Road 66E.
Hey, real quick, Chief, you know, I grew up out there. It looks like you guys have added on to that. Facility's pretty good over the years.
Yeah, yes, we have added on to it over the years. Four years ago, four years ago, we added on sleeping quarters so that we could have people there overnight rather than have them respond from their homes. Because it was primarily a volunteer and reserve firefighter station. Now there's a paint crew there 24/7.
That's a good-looking facility.
Yeah, it is. And a lot of room to grow on that property.
You bet.
Again, that facility has some maintenance issues that we think will need to be addressed over the coming years and even diving into some a little more costly expansion and remodel. But the location can't be beat for serving the kind of remote areas of our fire district. Many of you may be familiar with the property that sets on Jefferson and Little Fox on that corner in the Wellington Downs area. We were able to acquire that in 2016 when Wellington Downs started to be developed. We do have a concept station that was placed on that property architecturally and to kind of see how we could utilize that that lot. And as development continues on the east side of the interstate and access becomes more and more necessary due to service demand on the east side, we'll be building the station on that side. This particular station, there won't be administrative staff there. We'll be able to manage the size of it because it's not going to be a lot of offices. It's going to be sleeping quarters and accessory uses for the on-duty firefighters. And then, of course, the base space for the apparatus that's housed there. Currently, on this particular plan, this station is to begin construction within the next four to five years. Of course, that'll, you know, the timing that'll be dictated as more and more development occurs on the east side of the interstate and as the call volume and emergency access needs require. You guys may all be familiar with this. This is the Fort Collins Farms and Sybs property. And this is just a concept of the development by Sage Homes. This road right here is GW Bush. This is a north-south orientation, and then down here is County Road 58. I'm sure your planning commission and probably some of the trustees have seen this. There's no guarantee that this is exactly how the development will take place, but this was a conceptual drawing and something that has had some preliminary work done with town planning staff. These are the kind of things that we take into consideration for us being able to provide service into the future. And as the town puts together their long-term comprehensive plans, we keep a close eye on that. With the annexation of the Patterson property, we took a look at the two outlots that are there and have begun to communicate with the developer about all the potential uses for that for the fire district, including a relocation of the main station, Station 16 in town, and the potential training opportunities. We are looking to acquire both lots with the with the idea that if we don't utilize both of them, the other one can be utilized for other community uses, including uses that the town may have, churches, parks, whatever. I won't spend a whole lot of time on this because I may be speaking fire lingo a lot. But we have fire engines and we have water tenders and we have ladder trucks and then general fleet staff vehicles. But the majority of our vehicles, we try to refurbish them when we can to extend the life at a very reasonable cost, extend the life for five to seven more years. That's what we done with one of our 2008 frontline fire pumpers. We refurbished that last year and were able to push it out for another five to seven years on frontline use. We anticipate that in the coming, the next few years, we'll be purchasing our first ladder truck as we start to see more and more of townhomes, condos, commercial buildings increase in size to two stories and beyond. I'll talk briefly about the ISO classification. That's the insurance's insurance services office classification for all communities in the country. And it's utilized by different insurance companies. Currently, we set within the town boundaries of Wellington, we set an ISO classification of three with the highest rating or the highest level of fire protection at a Class 1. I can tell you that there's roughly 1,500 Class 1 communities in the United States. And we feel like we're strong in a very strong position to be able to improve upon our current three up to a two or a one, which commercially has a significant insurance impact. And then residentially, depending on your insurance company, you can realize some savings on your fire insurance. What you see here is the dark green is the response areas. I know this is kind of difficult to see, but these dark green response areas from Station 17 and Station 16 where it currently sits puts us in a position to reach all of these areas within four minutes. And then the lighter green is four to five minutes. And all of those things come into play relative to five minutes for the ISO rating. When we take a look at how we can improve upon that, we can plot out some different station locations. What you see here is the Little Fox area. And then over here is perhaps the Patterson property or in that general vicinity. And how our investment and long-term planning for stations is going to impact our response times so that we get the biggest bang for our buck in serving our community. For an even more close-up view, you can see the majority of the Town of Wellington. We have a response time from the Station 16 area or the current fire station of five minutes or less or less to the majority of our community. And then by moving stations around, this is east side of the interstate Patterson property area, we expand the majority of that to four minutes or less. And one minute may not seem like a big thing to somebody, but if you're having chest pain or having difficulty breathing, 60 seconds is an eternity. Fire growth expands three times and within a 60-second time period. As far as timelines go, future capital timelines. If we look at our stations, the plan that we're operating on right now shows that we begin next next year doing evaluation of a particular station and developing maintenance and remodel expansion plans for our Station 17 location. And if we move forward with the Patterson property acquiring that site, you'll see completion of that station around 2023. And then the future Little Fox station is completed in 2026. And then we do the same sort of thing with our fleet timeline and kind of lay out when apparatus are going to be refurbished. Of course, COVID will come into play as it relates to property taxes and how the economy impacts our community. So every fall, we'll be taking a look at this plan and modifying it. I won't dive too much into the ISO grading. If somebody really wants to nerd out on this, they can come see me and I'll spend hours going through this with you. Before I stop sharing this, any questions that you guys might have?
Chief, this is trustee Jerome. I just had a one question. And I guess it pertains to the railroad tracks and then the repositioning of the fire stations. If you were to move out to George W. Bush on the Patterson property and then get the the Little Fox station open and then close down the the main fire station that you're currently in with the railroad tracks being where they are and then the interstate overpass congestion problems that we all know we have. I mean, does that factor into any of this or are those non? I don't even know what term I'm looking for. Are they not really, don't make a difference on the equations as far as response times?
No, trustee Jerome, they absolutely do. These are those are things that we take into consideration. The future move to the east side of the interstate not only is driven by the the growth in that area, the sheer population increase and the call volume increase that we've experienced over there, but we also have to look at the interstate sort of as a river. How do we get to the other side of the river? And we have three bridges essentially close by to get there. And that would be County Road 58, Cleveland Avenue and Al Canyon. Those are those are quick ways for us to get over there. We have we have 66 that comes into play as well. But north, north to south, it starts at Al Canyon accessing the east side of the interstate and then goes all the way down to County Road 58. So we do have to take that into consideration. What are what are the impacts of those response times with the the projected? I guess the the projected development of these two stations, having us on the east side of the interstate and on the west side of the tracks, it would it would have to be a train wreck and a significant car accident that would limit our access to the core part of town. And then, of course, we have access to the frontage road to from both sides of the interstate there. So if you if you were to block off Cleveland Avenue and have a train wreck that covers from 64 all the way down to GW Bush, that would probably be the worst-case scenario if those two things happen simultaneously. So, you know, we could also talk about if a meteor hit somewhere, how that might impact us. But we do have to, not to make light of your question, we do have to take all of those things into consideration and have contingency plans. And as you guys saw with the Sumner Street fire, we do have automatic aid agreements with Pooter Fire Authority. And while all of our units were on a grass fire that was threatening structures 12 miles north of town, we had a structure fire at the same time. That's a once-in-a-lifetime sort of situation. But our automatic aid agreements came into play and they were dispatched immediately. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, that was what I wanted to share and field any questions that you guys might have. But I'll ask my board of directors if they have any additional items to share in that regard. During our capital group flash?
No.
I cover most of it. So like I said, just like with what you guys do from year to year, depending on funds that are available for allocation, your capital projects sometimes get pushed out a little bit further. Or depending on demands and needs, sometimes those projects are initiated a little quicker than what you have in your plan.
Well, well, Chief, I tell you what, I really like your future plans and your thinking. I think it's spot on myself. I think getting out of the middle of town and getting where you can be strategically placed is absolutely great thinking. I don't even care if we have the overpass done, which we do care about. But I think you would need that anyway. And I think that's the right thinking. And I think you're on the, I like the whole plan and I think it's well thought out. And you're going to get there. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. We have a large group of board members and staff that help put these things together.
You bet. Anyone else got questions? Well, sir, it doesn't look like it. I don't know what else, but we want to touch on the subject. I'm sure appreciate, you know, the the presentation and the time to get it together. I haven't done this with you guys, new folks yet, but I like it a lot. There's nothing else. I guess we can move on. Let us know what we can do to help you.
I sure will. Your town administrator, Kelly Houdling, is keeping me on a pretty tight timeline tonight, so let's move on.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got some other items on the agenda. I think up next is Mr. Bird to give a quick update to this group about our comprehensive plan. And then after that is Bob Gowing to talk about our water treatment plant capacity and where we're at on that. So Cody, take it away.
Great, thanks, Ms. Houdling. This is Cody Bird, Planning Director. Can everyone hear me all right? Okay, great. As many of you know, we, the town is in the process of updating its comprehensive plan. It was last updated in 2014 and quite a bit of changes happened since then. So it's time to reevaluate and update our plan to make sure it's consistent with the town's future. It also gives us an opportunity to to help guide what that future looks like. We started this project around the first of the year and we've been working behind the scenes with a lot of background research to get this prepared for public presentation. We have reached out to the public in a number of different ways, primarily digitally because of our current COVID circumstances. It's a little bit of a non-traditional way of public engagement. But we have had some good responses to online surveys and other information that we've put out there for the public to respond to. So we've got some great feedback and we're using that feedback to help guide the development of our our planning document. One of the big things I think that's that's useful for a joint work session like this between the town and fire staff or in the fire board, excuse me, is our future land use map. Chief Green shared a couple of images showing the the fire district area in the Town of Wellington. The Wellington Comprehensive Plan is taking a close look at the boundaries of the municipal city limits as well as our our future growth area. As many of you know, our current plan has that future growth area extending north to Al Canyon Road, just a little bit north of that and just a little bit south of County Road 58 is our primary growth area for the next 20 years. East to west, we're a little bit constrained, but we envision that area developing kind of from the interior and working its way out. We do anticipate, as Chief Green alluded to, we do anticipate the south end of town developing a little faster than other areas of town because of availability of infrastructure and desirability from a development standpoint. So we are putting a lot of our focus on the southern area of town, knowing that that's going to be the most immediate need as well as some infill in the core part of town. We're also taking a close look at our downtown area specifically to help identify a vision and theme for what that downtown is going to look like for the future so we can start to build strategies around how to really make that area something unique that this community can be proud of and want to support. So we're, we've got a lot of work left to do on our comprehensive plan. At this point, we are kind of consolidating some of the the public responses that we've gotten to our online polls. We're preparing that future land use map proposal for public consumption that'll be out here pretty soon. And we're starting to put together the the bones of our of our planning document. It's going to look a little bit different than the old text-heavy version. We're trying to integrate more graphics and more pictures and be a little bit more rich than just plain text. So we're putting that draft together currently and we hope to have that out this fall and be seeking public input on the plan document in December and January. We anticipate that the the final document would be presented to the town board for approval in January, February. And we will be following that closely on the heels of the comprehensive plan document with the Land Use Code update. The Land Use Code update is really the first tool to implement the vision of Um, the land use code update, um, will, is really the first tool to implement the vision of the comprehensive plan. And we envision that being just a couple of months behind, um, the comprehensive plan document approval, uh, with those, that first pass that, that this is how we're going to achieve that vision. Um, so that's kind of where we're at. That's the process and the timeline. Um, there's a lot of information that goes into a comprehensive plan and I'm not going to share all of it with you tonight because we don't have time. Um, but if there were any specific questions about where we're at, what we're working on or what the next steps are, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Cody?
Uh, no, I, I don't think, uh, the board of directors here have any questions for you, Cody.
Okay, thanks, chief, and thanks, mayor. Uh, if anyone does have any questions, um, that come up after this meeting is over, feel free to reach out to me, send me an email, give me a phone call, I'll be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Cody, I'd like to come visit with you about, you know, bring me up to speed on some things because I haven't made all those meetings. There's plenty of people involved there, but I'd like to come visit you, but I appreciate the update.
Absolutely. We can, we can set up a time to get you up to speed, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, you want to move on?
Good evening all. This is Bob Gowing, Public Works Director for the town. I can give you a brief update on kind of the current status of our two largest projects, which as you're all very much aware is the water treatment plant expansion project and the wastewater treatment plant expansion project. So the independent, uh, on the water side, on the water plant project, we completed that independent review, which I think we brought and presented to you folks back in, uh, September, I believe that was, maybe August. That's complete and we had some, um, solid recommendations on design changes from the previous iteration of that project. We have awarded the design contract, when I say we, I mean, the board of directors has awarded the design contract to Jacobs. And we're under design, so we're working with Jacobs. We have weekly meetings with them. Uh, some of our staff, Dave in particular, and DJ are working almost daily with Jacobs through the design process. And, uh, right now we anticipate construction completion in May of two thousand and twenty-four. And just as a recap, that was going to roughly double our existing capacity of two million gallons per day. Um, we're slightly, uh, but right now we're shooting for two point, four point two MGD. But part of the ten percent phase we're in right now is finalizing that. That number, and so we're working really closely with, uh, Cody and Logan Simpson on the comprehensive master plan because a big part of planning for an infrastructure project like this is what does the future look like? And not only in terms of population, but also land use and just geographic area. Uh, so we've been working closely with them. We are looking forward to seeing the first draft of the comp plan here fairly soon to, um, to kind of hone in on what our performance, our future performance goals are for the plant. And as a reminder, it still has the ozone taste and odor treatment in it. So we still anticipate meeting the original design goals for the project, uh, one of which was to greatly improve the taste and odor issues that the town has experienced in the past. On the wastewater plant, we've completed the wastewater treatment master plan. The collection master plan is nearing completion. That was all awarded to Jacobs under one contract. If you'll recall, and, um, so we presented that to the board a little while back and you guys will probably recall that it basically looks like almost kind of mirroring what we have now in order to roughly double, more than double the existing capacity of zero point nine million gallons per day. We're currently scoping out the pre-engineering services on that. Um, a wastewater plant's a little different than the water plant. There's a lot of preliminary groundwork you have to lay. We have to update our utility plan, which is a comprehensive document that, um, uh, gets approved by the North Front Range Water Quality Association. And we also have to work towards agreement with the state on our preliminary discharge limits. Uh, wastewater plants are basically designed around what we need to turn raw wastewater into in order to release it to the environment. Uh, obviously big water quality issues there. So defining what those discharge limits are is a key part of embarking into, uh, final design. So we anticipate the final design starting shortly thereafter. Um, and we're on roughly a similar track in terms of, handling the design phase and rolling into construction as the water plant. This is an obvious challenge in terms of resources. So we are working pretty hard to stagger that to the extent that we can, at least in terms of milestones, the kind of milestones that generate the most activity and workload for staff and for the consultant. So that's a quick update on that. I can show you quickly if we still have time. Um, am I running out of time, Kelly?
Oh, let's see what you got.
Just a, a little updated graph. I know you guys love our graphs, so. This is where we are right now in terms of water production. This doesn't quite have October yet, but you see a, a market drop from August to September. That's good news. Um, we're.
I'm not sharing anything. Yeah, I'm looking at crystal screen.
Okay, let me try that again. Let's see here. Can you see that now?
Yep.
So you saw, saw that we had that, um, that disturbing increase in May, which was forty percent, forty-six percent higher than any May we had on record. Um, and really that just kind of carried through the summer. I think we did see some benefit from our conservation efforts and in particular the watering restrictions, the irrigation restrictions. Um, not as much as we would like, so we're going to work on a some public outreach over the winter so that we're a little bit better prepared next spring for that. We do believe that most of this was caused by folks just staying at home. They're not leaving town to go use somebody else's water during the day. Um, but you can see that September was a drop. So right now we're, like I said, we're uh, out of the woods until next May. We're going to need to get geared up with the restrictions again and, um, hopefully have a, um, an effective public outreach program to, to perhaps do a little bit better than we did this year in terms of water conservation. Um, this graph, you've seen this one before. This is also alarming graph in the sense that it tracks what are typical volumetric wa- raw water, uh, that we, that we pull out of Reservoir Three. Just on a, a volume basis, this, these figures are all in acre feet. And this one tracks the actual numbers up until then. And, uh, you can see that that is a sixty percent increase over the typical August. And projecting this out a little bit takes us to a number which is, um, quite a bit higher than any number we've experienced before in terms of raw water, just sheer volume of water being processed through the plant. So.
So Bob, Bob, what, what, what's this major increase you attribute this to? I mean, we're not having people, is it still staying at home kind of thing or just sheer volume of user increase?
Oh, I, I think it's directly attributable to, uh, more folks staying at home. They're staying in Wellington during the day. Um, I know that in May, you know, if you recall, we had those nice couple of weeks. It was pretty not especially nice weather. And people had been cooped up in their houses for a little bit. We had that, that burst of sunshine and nice warm weather and I'm sure that, uh, folks were pretty stir crazy and they needed to get outside and they started working on the yard and irrigating and all those kinds of things. So. Um, yeah, this is just purely a function of more people here in town using town water throughout the year. Ever since, um, really the pandemic started.
I've got a question, um, not anything to do with the, uh, production of water per se, but, um, I know we just did a rate increase that went into effect this month. Were these projections available or when we, you know, uh, took the recommendation on what we need to do to, uh, increase the water rates? Um, does that take into account this high level of usage?
Partially. We, um, we had completed the rate study prior to the pandemic. And so it wasn't really included in, in the work that we, um, commissioned from the consultant. Uh, but certainly, um, our finance department and all of us on, on staff are uh, extremely aware of what this means for the budget. So, uh, this is getting accounted for as best as possible in the budget, which, um, the board will be seeing soon.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Gowing, this is trustee Whitehouse. I had a question. Early on with Jacobs, you had identified some potential interim capacity improvements that could be brought online with the water treatment plant prior to the completion of the full unit, the full rebuild. Any more information available on what those might be or the timeline for deploying something like that?
Yes, um, a couple of different tracks that we're following on that. The most promising, and this is, um, an important policy level discussion, so I'm glad, thanks for bringing this up, trustee Whitehouse. Uh, as, as you know, we don't run the micro filtration unit in the summertime because it simply doesn't do anything for taste and odor. So it allows all those taste and odor molecules to, to pass on through. And, uh, so we're looking at renting a granulated activated carbon skid to polish that water. To, uh, carbon is, as, as you guys know, our primary tool against taste and odor. It absorbs, um, those taste and odor molecules, Josman and MIB2. And, um, so passing that through a filter would greatly increase the quality. Uh, we're putting some rough numbers in the budget, this, the CIP budget, which again, uh, the board will see soon. And it's not necessarily a cheap solution, so we could still run the micro during the summer, but we're going, we're going to be much more likely to get taste and odor events that are unpleasant for our customers. So there's kind of a cost versus benefit discussion there to be had. And, um, we are hoping to discuss that with you further in the very near future. The other track that we're following is either retrofitting the existing filters or constructing new filters. The, the granulated filters, the conventional plant has the sedimentation, or flocculation sedimentation, kind of process, and then that water is finished, if you will, through, um, very large vertical filters that are graduated between a corso material and there's anthracite sitting on top. And those filters are a primary limiting factor in how much we can produce out there. So if we were to increase the capacity of the filters, either by modifying the filters that we have or constructing perhaps the, the new filters that are going in with the new project early. Um, so we're looking at that too as a different one. Frankly, that looks a little bit less promising. Um, because we need all that capacity in the summertime, right? So we're limited in terms of the months of the year that we could actually construct that. Hopefully that wasn't too much, too much information.
Anyone else got something to add or ask? Okay, Bob, we're going to recircle back during the CIP and hit some of those highlights you said, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, let, let's move. Thank you, sir. Kelly?
I think the next item is the fee waiver agreement discussion. Chief Green, if you'd like to, uh, to talk about that?
Um, yeah, I sure will. Um, first of all, thank you, um, Bob Gowing and Cody Bird for highlighting a couple of things that are very important to us. The, uh, future planning and, and land use of the town um, certainly has a, an impact on the decisions we make. And then of course, um, a, a viable municipal water system is, uh, essential to the services we provide. So. Um, thank you guys for, um, sharing that information and, uh, helping us stay on the right track as well. Uh, the, the next item on the agenda is something that we've, um, started working on and talking about over the last, uh, about the last twelve months. And, um, at least considering, uh, at the, the board level with the, the fire district. And what it is, is a, a fee waiver agreement between, um, our two governmental entities. Um, as you know, the fire district is a, um, a Title Thirty-two special district in the state of Colorado. And, um, our primary revenue source, eighty-five percent of our revenue comes from property taxation. Um, and anytime we're charging fees to one another between the town and the fire district, what we're essentially doing is taking taxpayer dollars and handing back and forth to one another. Uh, what a, what a fee waiver agreement, um, does, and this is, this is typical with a lot of intergovernmental, um, uh, partnerships or, uh, agreements is that, um, we just have a fee waiver between our two agencies and that can be as, as limiting or as robust as we want to make it um, relative to the services that we might provide one another. But with the capital projects that we have going, the capital projects that the town has planned and then just the ongoing, um, growth issues within our community. Um, we wanted to, uh, broach the subject with the town regarding, um, consideration of, of a fee waiver agreement. And I believe that that has been passed on to, um, the town just for some, uh, preliminary, uh, comments. Um, at least the administration or the legal council, but, um, it's something that we would like to discuss, answer any questions that, the trustees or even the, um, fire board directors may have, um, in regards to this issue.
Uh, 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 at first, chief, I, I don't know why we wouldn't have one. Uh, providing that, you know, we're equitable, right? You know, I mean, uh, uh, there's not, doesn't make sense to take money out of one hand and put it in the other. I get that very much. Uh, I don't know how much, um, um, of the benefit that I personally would be in any of that handling or deciding what that would be. Seems to me that that should be up to, um, you know, uh, you know, when I say up to, worked out to what you guys need, what the town has. And that's up to its finances and things like that. But I think that you absolutely ought to have something that's equitable and, and works back and forth for both nonprofit agencies working for the town and and, and that's just my thought on it. So with that, that's all I have to say. I'll turn it over to some people that are probably a little smarter than me in this area, uh, board members. If you have something to bring up, let's hear what you, what your thoughts are. Chief, this is, uh, trustee Jerome again. Are you referencing the agreement that we did, uh, it's been a long time ago now, about the, uh, the fees on new construction that you guys implemented? Is that the?
Oh, the impact fees?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that was, yeah, that, that, uh, is, that would likely be a portion of this. Um, but what I'm talking about with, um, with us having, um, stations being developed, uh, the, the town of Wellington, expanding, um, their water facilities and the potential for a new town hall. Potential expansion of other facilities that the town has. Charging construction fees back and forth for those or for other services such as. Charging construction fees back and forth for those or for other services such as, um, special event permits and that kind of stuff, just to codify that in such a way that we're not taking money out of our pocket and handing to the town and the town's not taking money out of their pocket and handing to the fire district. Um, for those kind of, um, fees.
Okay.
So I want to just comment, Chief Green, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm understanding properly. So in essence, what it sounds like is we would have, for example, normally their, um, development fees or things that we charge to people for development. So we would not charge those potentially to the fire district. And then if the town needed to have inspections for a town facility or holding our Fourth of July, then the fire district would not charge the town fees for that. Is that in essence what you're getting at? Am I understanding it properly?
That's exactly what I'm talking about. And when I say it can be limited or as robust as we want to make it, we would sit down and, and right now it's, it's merely conceptual.
Right.
We would set down, um, Kelly and I, um, legal counsel, um, might probably even, uh, have um, comments from Cody, because he may be familiar with these sorts of things in other areas. Um, I'm familiar with them. Uh, like I said, it can be as expansive as we want it to be. But what you're saying, um, Trustee Gator is exactly right. If the town builds a town hall, they're required to get a permit from the fire department for not just that construction, but also fire alarm and sprinkler plants and permitting. And those fees would just not be charged to the town. And then vice versa, um, fire, we build a fire station. For, uh, for us to try to do that, um, and stay within a, a budget, just like the town would, um, any savings that we can experience relative to permitting fees, uh, would be very beneficial.
Any other thoughts? Does anybody disagree with, uh, you know, you know, pursuing this? Seeing what it looks like?
It sounds like, uh, uh, it makes sense, actually.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense, especially as, as intertwined as the town is and with the, the fire district, you know, as much as we mesh together on so many different levels, it, it, it only makes sense. Cause yeah, you know, you just basically taking taxpayers' money and transferring it over to, to another entity in, in essence. So yeah, makes perfect sense to me. I, I'd be willing to, to entertain anything right now as far as that goes.
Trustee Gator got something?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, do we have any ideas as far as, is there a specific timeline that you guys are, that you have a thought, Chief Green, as far as when you'd like to see this in place? Or do you have any thoughts in part of that terms of what you guys would like to see?
Uh, I mean, we already have, uh, even though it's still conceptual, we, we have a template um, that we've modified a little bit. Um, you know, if we have something in place around the first of the year, that would be fantastic.
Yes, just my thought is I know we are in the process of hiring a new, uh, full-time town administrator. Um, and I think it would be great to have them, I think if we can work through it, that would, they could at least have eyes on it before we finalize anything. Because they're going to be a large part of, um, involved with that. I think it'd be great to have their expertise to weigh in on that. So I think that's great. Around the first of the year would be a good timeframe. So that sounds good to me.
Okay, yeah, we want our new town administrator and the new finance director to be a part of all that, you know, and you guys worked this out as equitable as you think is right. Cause I think that's, that would be the way to go, you know, rather than us diving into the numbers.
I'm not saying wait till we get a new town administrator to start. I'm saying let, let's start the process, let's work it out, but let's just hold off on finalizing anything, assuming that things move forward as they are right now. So that we can have that new town administrator weigh in on it before we make a final decision.
I think that's certainly prudent.
Okay, so we got a plan, Kelly? You got a, uh, uh, what do you think about that?
Yeah, that sounds great. We can have a, a small group meet, including our finance department at the town and, uh, legal and, and take a look at that and work on next steps.
Okay, let's do that.
Um, I just checked with the directors here. None of them have any comments in that regard.
All right then, I think we can make something happen.
And then, yeah, the last item is this general question and answer. Um, things that, um, were on the agenda or things that weren't on the agenda that, um, you have a burning question about.
Trustees? Are we gaining on that fire up in the mountains, Chief?
Um, we are, thanks to the cold and moisture.
Okay, I watched it, I, I went up and watched it last weekend quite a bit, because I got friends that are affected and boy, it was something else to get running. We got ran out of there. It was interesting, interesting stuff. So I, uh, hope our our men and women up there are doing good and getting that thing handled. We hopefully get some snow. Yeah, thank you guys for your help up there. I know it's a big deal.
Yeah, it had a huge impact on our staffing. Um, we had crews up there for at least the last six weeks. And, um, fortunately for us, everyone's back right now. And if, uh, there's a further need, we may be in a position to send our resources back up.
Well, good job, y'all. I really appreciate it. Appreciate the firefighter, everybody in there. That's absolutely right.
Yes, I'd like to, to thank the Wellington Fire District Board of Directors and Chief Green, um, for everything that you guys have accomplished in the past several years. Um, I know the last five years has seen leaps and bounds of growth within your department and I think you guys are doing a fantastic job. And I just look forward to seeing where the district moves to in the future. And, uh, I have a, I have a five-year-old son who wants to be a Wellington firefighter, so keep that in mind.
Okay, we certainly will. And we, we thank you guys for your continued support. Um, I can tell you that during that time period, um, where we've, um, experienced our own struggles, um, through this growth, uh, we've always felt extremely supported by the town of Wellington and the community as a whole. And that's a, that's a wonderful feeling.
Good. Good team, you got there, Chief, good team. And, uh, I know Steve's helping out a lot over there. Really appreciate it. And, uh, look forward to seeing you back at the gym, Steve, when you're coming back.
I've been there, where have you been?
I've been there. I haven't seen you. You must be coming in early. You gotta come in late to find me.
I know.
All right. Thank you guys very much. Yeah, we'll see you soon.
All right.
Okay, let's get on to the fun stuff.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can we take like a three-minute recess before we start the work session?
Sure. Let's do it. Three minutes. Okay, I got four, Kelly. You think you want to get started?
Sure, let's go ahead and get started. So our next item is review of the draft 2021 budget. Um, so Judy and Tyler, feel free to share your screen or, um, uh, take it away.
Good evening, can you see this, my screen?
You had it up a second ago and now it's not there.
Try one more time.
Yep, we see it now.
Okay, it said I couldn't share while somebody else was sharing, so I wasn't sure if someone was trying to share besides myself. So good evening, Mayor and trustees. Um, we're going to kick off, um, in, in your packet this evening. Um, I, I prefaced this with three pieces of information. And before we get started, I just want to, um, acknowledge that this is a work that is all the department heads have been working on this for many months before I came on board. So, um, uh, Lori, feel free to jump in at any time and Kelly as well, as we start moving through these pieces. Um, and then eventually we will get down to the operation piece. But what I wanted to do is break this into some digestible pieces because it's a lot of information. So I'm going to take the lead on the compensation discussions. And then as we move on, I'll, uh, have Lori back up some of the, um, work that was done prior to my arrival. And then, um, as we get down into the operation piece, we'll have, uh, Tyler, uh, share his screen and we will work back and forth on that. So, um, a lot of this work, uh, the compensation survey that you had, uh, started clear back in March, uh, so months before I came on board. And normally, uh, when I would jump into a budget presentation, we would be talking about colas or something along the lines of if we were going to do, um, you know, part cola or part, um, you know, evaluations and it was pay for performance. But as a group, we have had many, many discussions and I don't believe we're there. So we wanted to use this opportunity to reset um, using the information that you contracted out. So Candy Sedaris is with a company called, um, Compensation Studios. And that is the first piece that you saw in your packet. And it was all the salary grades that came out. Um, and then so a couple modifications that I did to this piece of information that was prepared. Um, so I added the last two columns, um, and then I, uh, listed the, the number of positions. And so the reason that became important is Kelly is, and I sat and we kept trying to figure out, you know, how, where does this come together? The last three tiers, the grades that you see there, we compressed those. Um, the numbers that Candy had, we felt as a town, we probably weren't quite there yet as far as, um, that number for the maximum range on town administrator was at $225,000. And so that really spread, um, our ranges out a great deal, uh, probably somewhere with that we are not ready to go quite yet. So those top three tiers, the 1200, 13 and 1400, um, I did, I compressed those and I used the same differential. And so then this is the, um, the work paper that we, as a group, have been working off of. And then the column that I added to the right, um, was I, I grouped how much we were spending in each one of those, uh, tiers. And then the number of positions. And the reason that becomes important is what you're looking at is on your screen. Um, this is a graph and it's really the, uh, your distribution of the number of positions. And so as I shared this with Lori earlier today, it's really interesting as we can describe where we feel as staff that we are needing those positions. And then when you put it on a graph, this really should be a, a nice little bell curve as we, um, work through, um, and start filling in where we have voids or where we have needs in our community. And as you can see, it's, um, you know, even though we can see it on our spreadsheet and we can say where we need the positions, it becomes pretty evident when you look at it, um, on a graph. So that's the reason I, I threw these numbers on a graph. Some people are more, uh, they like to see numbers. Um, and then some people are more, um, they, they'd like to think, see things, um, with a picture. So this is the same information, but as you can see, as we continue on um, this year and certainly into 2022, this area right here, the six and sevens, we still have some gaps. And so that, those will be probably our future asks. But again, um, this is just a, a conglomeration of work that was done for many, many months before I arrived. And then we try to take that and then align it with our goals that are going to be inside of our budget. And so the second piece that you saw in your, um, packet that I put together with some budget discussions, and I wanted to visit with that a little bit. Um, and just kind of walk you through where we were, um, prior. And then where we're at and where we're trying to get to for the 2021 budget and why, um, some of those numbers. And we had been asked previously, um, if we had any kind of point of reference for that. So um, as I work through the top, I'll just, um, work through and feel free to stop me at any time and we can, um, chat where some of the information came from. But in, uh, 2018, you had 37 positions. Um, and that was about 19% of your general, or, uh, no, it's not general fund. I, um, sorry, I put all of your budgets together. So it was about 19% of your So it was about 19% of your budgets and that was nine, over a little over $9 million. What I did is I took your capital projects out, so it should be your operations piece. And then in 2019, you bumped it up, you had 43 positions. It was then about 23% of your budget and you were sitting at 11 million. And so, I mean, your town has just, we have experienced growth that's, it's really hard to wrap your hands around. So then we were up at 46 last year. That was at 21%, COVID came and so actual numbers, when Tyler and I worked through this, we're estimating, we've got about six payrolls left, so we came in, we'll be at about 17.5. And that becomes important in a minute because we're going to talk about some salary savings that we have. But that's pretty significant in addition to your turnover. So for 2021, the first number that you see is the 47.25 and that would be funding just the positions that are already currently in place. And then the, the last sheet is, we're going to go through those individually, is the 6.5 full-time positions that we're asking to add and that would bring us up to 24%. And so the reason those numbers is we try to put those into context is I went down and so the Bureau of Labor Statistics, they have every kind of report you could ever want to lay your hands on. But they have a report and it comes out August, September-ish every single year. And it's a pretty comprehensive report, but you can go right in and you can dial down into state and local governments. And so as you go in and you see that that report came out just very recently and they're saying for wages and salary. So I pulled all benefits out, you try to strip it back so that we can kind of just look at the bare, where we're at without adding your benefits. And they're saying that would be around 32.43. Well, you can see up above, we were at the 24.6 on there. And so when, change my screen here. So we went through that and so as we keep moving through that and then I, my second reference is you, I went back and it's the American Institute of CPAs. And so we just have so many availabilities on there that we can dial into and you can go and see what do they think about this or, you know, recommendations or all different kinds of things. And so their, their spread was a little bit broader, but the same numbers, they're saying 30 to 38%. And again, this is just wages and salaries. And so the second little PowerPoint I put together is this information. And so as you can see over here with our benefits, we would, that would kick us up to about 30, almost 31%. And so the, on the Bureau of Labor Statistics, their number with, and so they define total compensation. It would be wages, salaries and benefits. And so that is the 52.36 number. Well, the piece that we don't have is lots, you know, most governments or state and local municipalities, they have their police services in-house. And so we don't, and so I took that number from the contract that is going to be in front of you shortly. We met with them and their, what they're asking for and I took that number and again, it's just their, their number includes their benefits, so I put that in there as if they were our staff, even though they aren't, because I'm trying to compare apples to apples and keep it that if we were looking at other municipalities as well. So that would bring us up to 38.84. So we're still far below the 52.36% that the Bureau of Labor Statistics comes out as total compensation. And so as we move through that, the, the reason that really becomes important is, like I said, in most, you know, in future years, I'll be in front of you and we'll probably be discussing, you know, just a number, a colon number or what, what the board feels is appropriate. But we wanted to use this year as a hard reset and trying to make sure that we have the appropriate number of staff onboard to get the projects done that we need to get done. And I know, you know, during my hiring process, we had visited with again about some of the the positions that haven't been filled and how difficult that has been. One second. I'm so sorry, phone, worse timing. So then I wanted to visit a little bit about this, the third page that was in your packet. And so this is the salary savings that when we were visiting about, we were at the 17.5%. You had many positions that went unfilled last year. So originally we were at the 46 position, 46.5 and then we went up to the 47. And so what, how that changed in 2020 is the meter reader retired and then that position was filled with a full-time position into the Public Works Department. Our recreation, part-time guest service, that was a part-time position and that was filled with some salary savings and that became a full-time position. And that's how we got from the 46 and a half to the 47. And so the total salary savings last year was $464,000. So some of those, that now, that savings is what we're asking to use as we move forward into this. And so this is part where I'm going to ask Lori to come back in, but I wanted to run through some of the positions that are in front of you on that third page. And you've heard about some of these, but I'm going to make my pitch is the first one is in two, as I've gotten into the finance department, I would like to take the purchasing position. You had a purchasing and grants position that was approved in the 2020 budget. As I come into the finance department, the way that that works, it, it is not really an efficient use of staff time. So I would like for the Assistant Finance Director and myself to take the grant piece of that. Grants are pretty unique and they, I, I don't want to turn that over to somebody that doesn't either have the skillset or has not been trained. That's a great way to miss an opportunity for a grant or to not be successful when you are applying. And the second piece of that, piece of that is the grant administration. And that is also one of those that you need to be pretty diligent and making sure that your paperwork is proper. When you goof those things up and you send them into the state of Colorado and you don't have a good track record, you are likely not to be awarded future grants. And so I thought that that piece for the grants process and grant administration would be better served if Tyler and I took that over. The purchasing piece, as we are working through, met with Bob for an extended period of time and his staff is spending a lot of time trying to do the purchasing part. And I feel like the finance department could much better serve, and I call it customer service, even though it's, you know, it's the, the staff member. So it's internal customer service. I feel like we could do a better job of providing that if that position, so right now your accounts payable position is halftime. And so, I'm sorry, it's a three-quarter time, but if we bump that up to a full-time position and then the court clerk position, which is currently in finance, move that up to the front office. Payroll was originally being done by the, by the front. And I feel like payroll is better served if that is handled in the finance department where we're tying that out to all of our reports that go for FICA and retirement and the state and the federal. All of those reports need to come back, tidy your general ledger. So I'd like to move that finance position in or the payroll position into the finance department, take the purchasing and combine it with accounts payable and then just do away with the position that said purchasing and grants. And so that is not, there's no additional position. It's a rearrangement of kind of a reorg of the finance department. But I feel after being there for a time, looking at the staff that we have available, it's really a better use of our staff and again, probably being a little bit more protective of the grant process, making sure that when we do go after those kind of projects, that we have a little bit higher level of staff looking and monitoring those. And then I want to move through the other positions and the tiers that they would fall into. And so this is where Lori's going to jump in. I put them in the order that the green ones, the deputy public works and the civil engineer. Prior meeting, we already kind of received the head knob to go, they're not funded in the 2020 budget, certainly we put those into the 2021 budget. And then the building official is in a little bit lighter green, but I wanted to make a notation of that, that Tyler and I are projecting that about $571,000 is going to be spent on those services. So certainly, I don't think the first year you could expect your building official to absorb all of that. But a big chunk of that by moving your building official in-house. And so the, for 2021, that first budget year, a little bit of a transition, but certainly when they get their feet under them and then Cody can work out how much they think that that's going to need to be outsourced as well as having a full-time building official in-house. And so the other one I wanted to make a quick notation is I pulled what we had currently paid out to LaWan, who is our IT servicer for right at this exact moment. And we're projecting that we're going to beat about $100,000 this year. And so that, so what you're going to see is your operation budget will go down and then those would, additional numbers would come up in salaries. So at that point, I want to turn this over to Lori because she's really done the work. You know, all of the department heads have, have, we've all had many, many discussions, but Lori's going to take the lead on walking you through the rest of those positions that we are requesting for the 2021 budget.
And before you go Judy, can you explain the police department here again with the 1.2 million to the 4.8 million? What's that all mean?
Yes, so if the police department was in-house, that number for us would be $4.8 million.
Okay.
But, and so they're not, but really it's funded with general fund money. And so in order to compare apples to apples with other municipalities, I felt that we needed to have that on there.
So when you look at those two numbers, do we have a pretty good deal going right now?
For our police services?
Yeah.
I would not agree with that statement.
You don't agree with that?
No, I, I, and it's a conversation probably for a separate work place. That's for 10 and a half positions and we have eight hours of coverage, but that's, it's probably a town administrator when they come onboard. Maybe, you know, looking at that and seeing that the, really what's best for Wellington as far as coverage.
Okay.
Great, I'll go ahead and jump in if that's all right with you, Mr. Mayor and Board.
Sure.
This is Lori Woodruff, HR Manager for the Town of Wellington. Good evening and thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm here to pick up where Judy left off to describe for you something about the positions that we are requesting. And before I do that, I want to make a note that we are currently in a place of moving from being a reactive staffing process to a proactive staffing process. In other words, rather than just filling a vacancy with another warm body, leadership team, Judy, Kelly, Bob, Cody, Hallie, everyone who's been involved in this, we have been looking forward, trying to look at what a proactive workforce would look like and how do we plan for that? Part of that is looking ahead at all the projects the town would like to complete and the workforce needed to accomplish those in the timelines that we need to accomplish them. Some of it is about looking at our current staffing and asking questions like, do we have the right people? The right skills, the right place at the right time? And so there's been a great deal of adjustment this past year as we've reflected on that and also as we have prepared to move from reactive to proactive workforce planning. So the remainder of the positions on the list you see before you begin with the Director of Parks and Recreation. Currently both parks and recreation are separate departments. In a larger municipality or even municipalities our size, often parks and recreation are combined. And they're combined for very synergistic reasons. One is recreation and parks often share many of the same facilities, parks, open spaces and trails for their programming. It has a way of bringing together those two indoor and outdoor components and allowing one director to serve the needs of both. Currently, our Parks Department is in the Public Works Department under the Streets Division. This has greatly stretched the streets side of Public Works and, and really parks and streets are very different functions. So it would benefit the town if we were able to move parks and park staff planning to the recreation side and hire a director to align both of those programs. This would allow us to entertain new conversations such as open spaces, park and trail development, potential sports and recreational facilities for the future, even looking at things that might increase our cultural or special events capabilities. And so this, this position is a proactive reach towards where we want to be in the future and allows us the staffing to meet those needs. Under IT technician, I realize that you understand that we have a commitment to LaWan at this time. And there are a lot of things that LaWan is providing for us on the IT side, but there's also a lot of gaps and those gaps take up staff time. We are on our side having to make a lot of help desk phone calls and none of us are IT technicians. We don't have hardware and software expertise. We didn't graduate with computer science degrees. And so we are left trying to diagnose and repair our hardware and software issues. We often have to deal with creating interfaces and speaking with LaWan as non-technicians, it's a struggle sometimes to figure out how to install or troubleshoot our computer issues. With an IT tech person on staff, we could diagnose and repair hardware and software issues in-house. That person could help us with such things as just getting connected to the local printer. They could help us configure and troubleshoot our maps and our drives. They could help us deal with program and even managing our inventory, which in most places I've worked, computer inventory is on a replacement schedule. Every piece of computer that is owned by the town is accounted for and checked out and returned upon a termination or a retirement. And, and those functions are not really occurring right now. The other additional piece that this IT technician could provide for us in a way that none of us can would be to oversee our data security efforts. As you all know, security for online data and information is of high import. And while LaWan can provide many of those backend features and firewalls for us, it's important for us to have someone on staff who can also make sure that those are functioning, that computers are efficient and ready to go when a new employee is brought onboard, that all the backend material is done in advance. And right now, many of those tasks are falling on HR to get those computers ready, to get new staff onboarded, to deal with terminations and how we move email and OneDrive and other documents to staff that are remaining. And, and this is a difficult thing for HR to do in addition to all the HR tasks. So we're requesting this IT technician position. Management analyst is really a really great position for us. It will provide support to both the town administrator and the deputy town administrator offices. But in addition to that, it will provide a great deal of support to the leadership team and all the directors that sit on that team. This person would bring a strong knowledge of statistics and analytics as well as public administration. They would have an understanding of organizational development and research. And those tools would be used to help us solve problems, help us create practical solutions, often with a fiscal savings. They would also oversee special projects that none of the directors or leadership have time to take on, all of which are necessary to do our jobs to the fullest and best of our abilities. Last position that I want to speak about is the HR Generalist. As you all know, the HR position that I currently inhabit is a one-person show. And yet HR And yet HR is expected to breach many, many different subject areas such as compensation, benefits, training, management of people and culture, there's safety, wellness, performance management, organizational development, compliance, strategic management, risk management, succession planning, cross-training and on and on and on. And now you can add IT to that list. That is an impossible list of tasks for one person. And so we're asking for a half-time support person, an HR generalist who can help me with just the data portion of my position as well as keeping um compliance and maybe workers' compensation under wraps. Um, these would be some great, great new um proactive positions for our town which would allow us to grow into 2021 and allow us to begin to move even more aggressively towards completing the goals and objectives of the town. Um, so I I think I'll stop there and ask if you have any questions.
Yeah, real quick. So you have a salary savings of four hundred and sixty-four thousand. You want to add all these other positions. Is it my understanding that four sixty-four is going to pay for those positions or do you need a little more?
So now if you um on inside of your packet that we had, it was the second page.
Yeah.
Um, so last year uh salaries that were on uh your, it was the page thirty-one where it uh lists out all of your salaries. Your salaries last year budgeted was two point seven five four. And so as we went through, the three hundred and ninety-one thousand two seventy-two is what it would take to bring up. Many of our positions were not in the ranges that they needed to be. So that was that first piece, the compensation survey um that was started about six months ago. And then those six and a half positions that we wanted to add, that is another five hundred and seven thousand dollars. So the total ask is uh eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Uh, but I wanted to break it down. Um, it it does seem like a large piece. However, um again, the three hundred and ninety-one thousand of that was bringing up current positions and then the six and a half um positions that we want to add is the additional five hundred and seven. And then just making a notation on that, that certainly there are um some some money that would be backfilled from the operations side on the uh building official and the IT tech. Um, because those right now we are outsourcing them under professional services.
Okay, but you got this four sixty-four, three sixty-one and savings. Is that offset anywhere in the eight ninety-nine?
That will go in back into your um fund balance because it's in a separate year. So yes, you could take that directly off of the eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars.
That's a good point. All right. Thanks. Anyone else got questions?
Well, I do have one comment and I mean, it looks like that we need some engineering support in uh public works with the uh, I can't read in the dark green. But I was just wondering, I I think I mentioned it before and obviously we can't make a decision. I mean, it's certainly my opinion that getting assistance sooner as opposed to later would might be with our infrastructure stuff ramping up that, you know, I certainly would entertain uh if this is the will of the board to look at creating a budget amendment to get those positions funded for the public works department in this fiscal year and start that process this year as opposed to next year. Clearly something that needs to be discussed and obviously no decision to be made at this point.
Happy to hop in here real quick, Trustee Whitehouse. Um, since we do have the salary savings and we had um heard the board indicate the interest of being able to get the public works um engineering support sooner rather than later, that's something that we could do now um with the salary savings that we have. So if if the board's okay with that tonight, that's something that um we would like to start recruiting for, knowing that we have an urgent need with all the projects that we have upon us.
So we're in a work session right now, I believe, not a special work session. So we actually can't can't, do we need a formal vote to go ahead if that is the will of the board?
This has also been brought up in a regular meeting as my understanding and the board did give direction. Um, happy to look at that, but it's also something from an administrative standpoint, I believe that we um, we would have the ability to go ahead and and make that change, but um yeah.
I was under the impression that we pretty much gave the go-ahead for this. I don't remember if it was the last meeting or the meeting prior to that um that we uh directed um staff to go ahead and start moving forward with trying to get those positions filled as quickly as possible, especially with uh uh Vince Gentry departing, leaving um the engineering, one man down with all these big projects that are needing all hands on deck to 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 look at plans and stuff like that. So I'd have to go back and look, but I'm fairly certain that we went it went ahead and at least without, I don't know if we did a formal vote, but everybody was pretty much in agreement. If I remember correctly.
Yep, that was my understanding. That's something that we can certainly do. We just wanted to um incorporate that into the budget tonight and um so you wouldn't be surprised again that we had, we're making those adjustments and plan to move forward with that sooner rather than later. So.
If there's no objections, go ahead, Trustee.
I was just going to say, uh, Trustee Jerome, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, if there's no objections, I remember the same thing. There's no objections. We really don't have time to mess around. We're we're shorthanded across the board, so. Probably ought to keep going.
Absolutely. This is Jude again. And so absolutely, even if we, by the time we advertise um and we, you know, we're, if we were able to get someone to come in and then we had to interview and they had to give notice, um, very likely they would only be on one or two payrolls in the year 2020. And we certainly have the salary savings that we can backfill that with. So we're being good positioned there. We wanted to just be very transparent. Um, and for sustainability reasons, I wanted to list them out individually and include them for 2021. So um along the same lines as what Kelly was saying, um, I just want to be very clear that they are full-time positions that we would fund going into future years. And so um, it's not just adding the positions, but we want to make sure that we believe that they are sustainable. And that is why um I wanted to back up a little bit as far as I believe they are and I believe that we have the support um with, you know, the statistics out of the Bureau of Labor Statistics and from the um AICPA that we are below um you know, what is standard in the industry. And so I think if we add these positions, um and again, the graph was kind of a different view of it, but it's the same information that that is where we have our weak areas.
I don't hear any objections. So.
Nope, me either.
I think you need to be moving. Let's move.
Okay, so we're going to move on from compensation.
Have a couple of questions. Sorry, I thought we were still talking about something else. I did have a couple of questions on a couple of these positions. I can definitely see where there's um benefits for improving the parks and rec and getting, I under, I agree with getting the parks out of our public works to free them up to focus on public works. The concern that I have, and I I really appreciate Ms. Tippett, you putting together the um analysis that you did and showcasing where we fall in average with everything else, which is good to know. But that being said, I think looking at our finances, we're still in a very tight situation with a lot of capital expenditures going out. And as much as it would be nice to work on improvements with recreation and doing more and things like that, to me personally, I feel like a bigger concern is the just bare bones, the utilities problems that we have right now. And so is there, is it possible for us to make some sort of a transition with parks without having to hire a director? Because we'd be adding a fairly significant staff level in terms of pay grade to accomplish that where I feel that that is not the most important thing that we need to be focusing on right now.
I'm going to defer to Lori and Kelly. Um, again, these discussions, many of them happen prior to my arrival. And so um I can, I can run numbers for you, but I I'm not certain what what that means operationally.
Well, Lori or Kelly, you guys, what do you think about the director of parks?
I I hear you, Trustee Gator. Um, this is Lori Woodruff. Um, I I understand your concern and I I do think we could potentially do a different type of arrangement if that was the will of the board, perhaps um moving the recreation manager up to a parks and recreation manager type position. Um, bringing in some of that parks um responsibility into that position. Um, but doing so would remove that person from some of the necessary operational recreation work that they would normally be doing. And they would also then have to deal with all of the staffing that would the parks, moving the parks department from public works would entail. And that would mean then, you know, beefing things up from the bottom, so to speak, potentially hiring some lower-level positions to help deal with that loss of staffing at that manager level. That I would like to look at from a budget standpoint because it actually might cost you more to do that because now you're providing benefits, maybe across more people. Um, and and that that cost overall might lose, lose money. Uh, but I I do take your your note to point and it would be something for Judy and I to crunch out some numbers to see what is in the best interest fiscally for the town to be able to manage those two pieces and still get parks out of public works.
I would greatly appreciate that because I I agree. I I think getting the parks out of, to me personally, getting parks out of public works is the best partial portion of that. It's not to take anything away from the parks and recreation, but that would free up Mr. Gowing and his staff to really focus on the major issues we have at hand. And so I think there's a lot of benefit for that, but at the same time, again, long-term, I see there's a lot of value there, but I think this, I look at it from this standpoint, we're, we've already raised water rates significantly. They're going to be raised again in January. Um, so I want to make sure that on our end as a town, we're finding any areas that we can, even if we're already below the averages, to make sure that we're keeping that budget as tight as we can until we get things a little bit more straightened away. So we're not just passing those costs on to our citizens for, you know, water obviously needs to happen. But I want to make sure at the same time, we're being as fiscally responsible as we can.
Absolutely, Trustee Gator. And Judy and I will work on that information and come back to the board with that.
Great. Thank you. And then the other question I had is on the management analyst position. Um, and I don't disagree. I think it'd be beneficial from, to have that support for the um town administrator and assistant town administrator and maybe Ms. Hodling, you can speak to this. Um, it's not a really high-level position. It's kind of a mid-tier salary position. But again, it's kind of the same concern comes in there. Are we really at a place where it's gonna? I I'm just, I'm not seeing where that offset is. Is it really going to make our town administrator and um assistant town administrator that more effective and help us to actually really save on things getting done versus utilizing those same funds to focus in on some of the areas, other areas that we need to have things happening?
This position is absolutely necessary for our operations. Um, having served in this position in a previous organization myself, it comes with a lot of cost-saving to the organization that they can be pivoting between helping and assisting with public works, helping the planning department, um helping parks, recreation. It's a floater position. They provide tremendous value to this organization. Um, and we currently have someone serving in this role more of an intern capacity. Uh, but to be able to have this full-time for us, um, it's not, it's it's not just helping the town administrator or the deputy. This is helping all departments. Um, and it's instead of paying another high-level executive to be able to do a lot of those things, um, you have someone that's kind of on that um management track eventually, but to be able to help with all departments that we have going on. So um, and it's quite frankly, we just don't have enough staff. Um, you know, I think all of us, the directors could certainly, everyone could use a deputy underneath them. We're all working managers. This is the most cost-efficient um effective way to be able to have someone to do, you know, basically be a jack-of-all-trades. Um, so you can say, um, you know, hey, we have the huge um water uh conservation plan that we've got to figure out and get going. This position would be helping with that. Um, so it's something that, you know, kind of takes the burden off of um, a lot of those projects that the directors just don't have capacity to get to. Um, and so I think it it provides tremendous value to an organization to have that floater role.
Perfect. Thank you very much for explaining that. That really helps and I I would agree with you. If it's really going to have that big of an impact, then I have no problem with it.
Any other thoughts? Well, well, I um, we'll check on those things. Okay, Lori, you know, uh, a trustee Gator brought up and, you know, and let's get our organization up to where it needs to be so you guys can be effective and we're not shorthanded anymore so we can move forward with these big things. Okay?
And this is Jude again. If I may, I just wanted to uh touch base again in support of the management analyst. Um, we um at the last, you know, it over the last four, three weeks have taken in an incredible number of applications for the COVID funding. And this position has been so instrumental to me in gathering that information, putting it into a format that I can look at it. And so we're, we're going to be able to get those checks out to the businesses tomorrow. Um, over two hundred thousand dollars and the same conversation hopefully by Friday. Um, the residents that have applied for the utilities. Um, some of their stories are are heart-wrenching. They they call and they're, they're ready to get their electricity turned off. And because of this position, she has been able to put those together for me so that I can literally look at sixty applications at one time, go through them, pull up our utilities and move through them in a manner that I can say, okay, we can fund this, we can fund this, this person doesn't live here, et cetera, et cetera. So this person is, even though it's not in the finance department, has been a tremendous asset to me over the last couple of weeks.
Okay, good enough. All right then, are we ready for the big presentation?
So on that note, I want, so we're going to move away from comp uh compensation. Um, and then we're going to move over to the operations. Tyler's going to visit with you on the general fund and then moving into the enterprise fund, just reminding uh folks, your enterprise funds cannot take money out of the general fund. So your water, sewer, drainage, et cetera, it has to be funded with inside of that fund. And then before we leave that, I want to touch base on the water fund um before we move on um for our further discussion. So with that, um Tyler, uh tag your it.
Just uh, if you could, I'd share your screen real quick. I'll jump in. All right. So good afternoon, Mayor and Board Trustees, uh Tyler Sexton, Assistant Finance Director. So in your packet, uh you have the 2021 draft budget. But before we dive into that, I have a simple, a quick PowerPoint presentation over. It's like a real quick recap of the 2020 preliminary numbers and I I sent it to you guys out in an email. So, but here it is on display. So for the government fund revenues, I broke them out by fund and compared budget versus projected for year end. As you can see, for the general fund, we're expecting a ten point one-six percent increase. Uh, Streets Fund is a four point eight-three percent increase and Parks uh is an eight point eight-four percent decrease, uh resulting in a five point zero-five percent increase compared to the budget. Uh, that's going to result in four hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and forty dollars of additional money is going to the fund balance. So um so looking at the expenditures across all the funds, um, the projects, all of them come under, under budget. So the general fund is sixteen point one-four percent under budget. The Street Fund is seventeen point two-nine percent under budget and the Parks is seven point one-six percent under budget, resulting in um nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars of additional funds going to the fund balance. So then looking at the enterprise funds, uh, the water fund is point nine-nine percent increase in revenues. Uh, the sewer fund is six point eight-three percent decrease in revenues and the drainage fund is four point three-four percent increase in revenues, resulting in a one point one-three percent decrease in the projected revenues or a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollar uh short of budget. So again, just looking at the expenditures for the enterprise funds, you can see we have a twenty-five point three-nine percent increase in the water fund. Uh, six point six-nine Uh, 6.69% decrease in the sewer fund. Uh, 9.36% decrease in the drainage fund, and that's results in additional expenditures of $850,614 of over budget. So the key takeaways, um, I've highlighted the key points for the board for when looking at the 2020 numbers. And this is kind of the stuff that we in finance kind of pulled out. And so the government funds increased revenue by 5.05% and decreased expenditures by 14.55%. Uh, that results in 1.1 million, 391,661 dollars being added to the general fund this year. Uh, the water fund total loss for impact fees was 1,786,030. If you were to bring the impact fees that we did collect for the year, it would have a gain of $2,497,470. Uh, the sewer fund income before impact fees were 150,629. And if you include those impact fees, it goes up to 1,800,629. And then the drainage fund income before impact fees was 120,602. And then if, again, you include the impact fees, you're at 388,563. So the salaries and benefit savings for 2020, as previously stated, is 464,361. And then the annual turnover ratio for, is 28% for 2020. And when I looked across the board, the typical government entities have about 1.3 to 1.4% turnover.
That turnover personnel?
Correct. And so, and so, um, uh, we did 4,787,257 dollars worth of capital projects this year. Um, we budgeted 9,365,831. And that's, I took out the water fund excluding that. And we've so far completed 52% of the capital projects is what it's expected to finish at year end. So, transitioning into the 2020 proposed revenues, uh, this slide shows the total revenues of 18,620,494. When you include transfers and loan proceeds, the total revenue and inflows equal 50,509,546. And then this slide shows the combined expenditures and outflows for all the funds. Total expenditures are 36,486,259. And then when you add in, include the capital projects and transfers, we get 60,525,311. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Sexton, I had a question regarding the, uh, the 28% turnover. That's both voluntary and involuntary. Would that be correct?
That is correct. Um, trustee Whitehouse.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Tyler, right now at this point?
No, so that was just a recap. And then, um, we can just go into the packet if you want me to pull it up or every guys want to go if you had any questions. I know it was, it was quite a large packet, you know, the budget is pretty large. So, um, we can discuss any questions you guys had or anything about the presentation. Um, and we can, happy to answer any questions.
And so this is Jude again. I just wanted to mention that this is, um, so every department head has turned in the individual sheets. And so the information that you see is a really a reflection of what the department heads have requested. And then when it comes to finance, we put it together as one document. So, um, and I believe all of our department heads are on. So if we have any questions, um, this would be a great time to, to get those answered, because my finance department may not have the answer. We have the numbers, but if you have anything, uh, particular to a department or to a specific budget.
Does anyone have that kind of question? Have you seen anything in here? Do you'd like to talk about specifically to a department?
Mayor Hammond, I do have questions about the recreation portion of the budget, but I'll schedule a time to meet with staff at a later date.
Okay. Yeah, that might be some of that going on. I don't know if it's necessary to go through all the department. Anyone else? Uh, do you know of any red flags in any of these departments that you want to bring up? Staff?
So this is Jude again. And so yes, the, um, on your last slide, I wanted to say on the water fund.
Yeah.
We have talked at length with Bob, both Tyler and I, we have explored, um, pretty much everything that we can think of. And we are very hopeful that those water shares, um, uh, number was going to be lower, that we were going to find that information. But as you are aware, we found out that that is not one of the options on the table to us. And so as Tyler and I have visited with this, our fund balance policy is tied to debt service and it has, a part of that is a two-year policy. The covenants on your loan is 110%. So I would like to ask permission or direction, if we can go back and explore that fund balance policy, tie it more to the expenditure side, certainly recognizing that we have to have the covenants and that we're in good standing with our loan, but figure out a way so that we cannot just go back and pass that. Not, I mean, right now is the fund balance policy. It's like, we'd have to keep $5 million. Um, and that's a tough number, um, for 4,000 water users.
You know, Judy, I, I, I agree with going back through all that as many times as you need to.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's, yeah, I wanted to, before I spent a whole bunch of time and I didn't want to get sideways with you guys, if you felt very strongly. So I just, I think we can, um, we can go back and do, do our homework and bring you back something that's very responsible. But hopefully, um, with some significant savings to our, our users.
I think that's, I think that's absolutely necessary. Anyone else have an objection to that?
Absolutely not. I guess I was just under the impression that the, uh, policy that, uh, the board had, I, I don't remember. I, I know it was within the last couple of years that this policy was enacted. Um, but I guess I was under the impression, and I don't remember in specifics, that that policy number was a required number for some reason. I mean, that's, that's the only explanation that I can think of, of, of why uh, the board at the time would have approved such a high number. Um, I'd have to go back and do some research of my own to, to jog my memory, but if we're not required by anybody to keep that high of a number, then obviously, you know, we, we, we should lower it to the lowest number that we can put it at and, you know, remain comfortable and, and keep the funds solvent. And to keep the state off our back and also to, to keep our, our bonders or lender, whichever that, you know, whatever you want to call them, keep them happy as far as having, you know, enough in, in reserves to, to, to satisfy those needs. But yeah, I just, I guess I don't remember for, you know, uh, for sure. But you know, if that number is, is outlandish, which it sounds like it is, and yeah, we need to really revisit it and we need to visit, revisit it quickly, because I think that's something that obviously, um, that water users, including myself and every other trustee and the mayor on this call, you know, we're going to be paying those higher rates. And if we can alleviate the, some of those rates going forward, then let's absolutely do that. So.
Couldn't agree more, trustee Jerome.
Yeah, this is trustee Whitehouse. I would concur with, uh, trustee Jerome. I mean, I think I've, again, the reason the policy was set the way it is, I don't know if it's, if it's not in line and it can provide relief as well as security for bondholders. And I, I, I'm absolutely for taking a look at this again, especially with someone who has more experienced eyes. And I think we passed these in good faith, believing that we were doing the right thing. The question is, did we really, again, is there another approach that may be viable?
I think, I think if I could jump in, what might have happened was prior to this, we didn't have a debt service of this high, this magnitude. And so when you request, you know, two times debt service on our most highest, you know, loan payment was 200,000, that's really not that big. But when you have 1.7, you know, that serves two times that, that's kind of where how it got grew so fast on us. And back then, we didn't really have a lot that much debt service in the water fund. So two years of debt service was maybe 400,000, which isn't unreasonable. But when you have as large of a loan as we do now, you know, the policy kind of worked back then, but now where it's at now and it needs to be revised. I think that's what happened.
If, if I remember correctly, this is a policy decision that was set back, but just like you said, Tyler, this is a unique fund. And, um, man, I think you guys ought to go at it. This is in within our control. I really.
A, a quick question for staff, Mayor Hammond. Um, is the water fund balance policy adoption essential to be done in parallel with the adoption of the budget itself? Meaning, do we need to adopt this fund balance policy on or before the same time that we adopt our, our budget?
So this is Jude again. Um, the, the answer is no, but when we adopt the budget, we would need to have, you know, again, being transparent, that we would be at that point in, um, we would be in contradiction of what the adopted fund balance policy is. And so, I mean, there's a huge points for the town of Wellington to, for having a fund balance policy. Many municipalities don't. And that is a frightening place to be. So I mean, you get huge credit for having one. I just believe that we can maybe go back and tweak this, do a little better job, be very responsible. We'd never want to put our, ourselves at risk for if we wanted to go out for bonding or for any other type of loans. Um, but give some relief to our users. And so, um, I think that in a fairly, um, you know, if not with the same meeting, but very soon they're following, um, we could have a fund balance policy rewritten.
Right.
Uh, this is trustee Whitehouse. I have a question. So moving forward with the wastewater treatment master plan, there's going to be a need at some point, um, guest bond with revolving fund through Colorado. While it's not on the radar right now, it's imminent. Would it make some sense to revisit that as, uh, for the same reasons?
Absolutely. Um, so we will look at all of the fund balance policies, um, and explore those, bring those back to you with a good philosophy of why we're going to do what we do. And certainly when you go after bonding, they will look at your fund balance policy, not just is it three months, is it six months, what that number is, but they will look at your philosophy of what you're doing and why. And so with that, I mean, uh, we were able to, in, in the past, one of my past experience, we were really able to get a better bonding by having a responsible fund balance policy. So we'll get to work on it. We'll bring you something back. Um, and we'll have some, some good explanations of why we want to move in that direction.
I, I think a key word also is not just responsible, but reasonable.
Absolutely.
Okay. I, I think it's one of the best ideas I've heard in a while, to go back through all that and take your hand.
I really appreciate this concept too. I've always kind of wondered why, why it had to be this way. So I appreciate you revisiting this because um, if we can give any relief to our customers, that would be great.
Other comments? Okay.
So before we leave this evening, um, the capital improvement, uh, projects, we continue to uh, tweak these so that we can get you a very, uh, comprehensive list. Um, part of that has been with the shortage of staff in 2020. Uh, understanding where we are on the projects, um, as Tyler, uh, mentioned in his presentation. We're at about, we're about half. So we need to understand and figure out the priority on those, which ones get moved to next year. And then the funding piece for that. So we have that at this, uh, time, uh, programmed in for November 10th. And we will give those to you. And then, um, hopefully Lori and I, the one question I have right at this point is explore another option for that park and rec uh, director position. And then, um, certainly Tyler and I will continue to, every time we have another accounts payable, that's great for us, because then our numbers get closer and closer. Um, so that our year-end projections are correct. And then that does help our ending fund balance. So we are correct when we look at our beginning numbers for next year.
Okay.
I did have a question.
Trustee Gator, go ahead.
And so I, and I, I don't know if this is just because we're working on something else, but I noticed that it looks like the economic development position has been removed from the budget for this coming year. And I know that we were looking at the possibility of bringing in a firm. Uh, I thought we were in the process of doing an RFQ to bring in a firm to do that until we got a full-time town administrator to then look at actually bringing someone back in. But I see that that position has been removed completely from the budget. Um, could they get a little bit of an explanation as to why that was done?
Kelly, do you want to jump in or do you want me to?
Um, sure. Not knowing the direction of, you know, the new town administrator and, and, um, you know, what type of services is, is needed for our town of our size at this point. I think that's something that we need to, um, just be cautious at looking at. Um, we do have money in professional services within economic development budget.
Right.
But I, yeah, so we, we do have money to, for contractual, um, services for the town. Um, but I think that's something that does require, you know, the board and the town administrator to discuss further. On, you know, does it merit a community of our size to have an in-house person? Does it need to be full-time or does it need to be, you know, I, I think there's more discussion that would be needed. Um, so that's, that's why we, we changed it into professional services rather than including a salaried plus benefit position, um, at this, at this current moment.
Well, you know, it, it does make sense to get the new town administrator on board to get the feel for that town administrator. And it does make sense to have some monies earmarked for something. Do we have enough earmark for professional services to shift over to in-house if that town administrator should want to go that route?
We've got about $60,000 in professional services and economic development. And then another additional $15,000 in contractual and marketing services. Um, so about $75,000. Ability to, um, do something with, but, um, you know, should that be something that uh, the board wants to bring an in-house position again? I, I think that's certainly worth a, a conversation. If you'd like us to budget the, you know, for that position, I, I don't think you'd be hiring it first of the year. So maybe it would be reduced. Um, you know, halfway through the year to allow the administrator to evaluate that position. Um, we just felt that there was additional conversation that needed to be had rather than including the, the whole, um, budget that was in 2020.
Okay. Well, I would like to have that conversation as a board before we just blanket pull that out. Um, because that was part of the reason that I agreed to not proceeding with trying to hire someone new into that position was the understanding that we would be doing that after the new town administrator came in. And I, I think that that is one of the areas that we are struggling is with that, bringing in that. So I think there is value to having someone in that position that is your local. So I think we don't need to have that discussion tonight, but I think the board definitely needs, and it, the whole board feels we need to go this route, but I would like to see that discussion had by the board before we just pull that out.
I would suggest, I would suggest that, um, this isn't really the board's purview of this type of stuff. This would be the town administrator's, uh, job to decide what they feel the staffing levels are and what they need to be. Uh, it's, it's written very clearly in our town code that a new administrator hired has to provide a, uh, organizational chart or organizational plan to the board for approval within, I believe it's 90 days of, of their hire. So, you know, as far as thinking that we as, as board members know what's best for the, uh, hiring of positions, I think we need to leave that up to the administrator, the new administrator that comes in. And if he or she chooses that, you know, that's the direction that they think that we should go, then we have the opportunity to either approve their, their organizational plan or, you know, make suggestions at that point. So I mean, in all reality, until we have a, a hire in place and they're, they've taken the job and they're able to do their evaluation and, and provide us with their analysis, any kind of discussion right here is, in my mind, a moot point, because it, it doesn't really matter until, you know, uh, the new person that we're going to hire to, to, to manage the employees of this. the new person that we're going to hire to 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 manage the employees of this town, you know, tells us what they think. So. I think you're right.
My two cents on that.
No, I think you're right. We got to give the town administrator, the new one, that their opportunity to assess this entire package. But it's important to understand that we have monies available and earmarked for whatever they might choose to do rather than going for a budget amendment. Well, and maybe I also shoot, you know, I mean, depending on how this all shakes out, this we may have already be required by law to have approved a budget for the fiscal year of 2021. And so any anything, any suggestions or tweaks that they want to make down the road will probably require a budget amendment if they if they so choose to make those types of changes. So once again, I mean, we're we're talking in hypotheticals because until we have that new administrator in place and and they assess and make a plan and look to execute it, you know, we can guess all we want, but nobody knows because we don't even know who our new administrator is going to be yet. So.
Trustee Jerome, I think you bring up a really valid point that with the hiring of the new town administrator, one of the requirements to submit that new organization chart. So I would implore the board to reconsider, although I appreciate trustee Gator's consideration and direction to look at that that facet. I think that I'd like to see town staff really focus on that water fund balance policy and leave the personnel structure questions and issues until that new town administrator is on board and they build out that org chart. And then we can really kind of tweak and and pull that apart. But we have a very short period of time between now and the end of the year. And I think that the water fund balance policy takes a significantly higher priority. And I'd really like town staff to not be spread too thin and take as much time as they need to really look at that in detail and diligently and with candor and caring. So I appreciate trustee Gator's evaluation of that portion of the presentation this evening. But that would be my preference. The rest of the board may not agree with that, but that's my two cents on the matter.
I guess my question then, and I can see both sides of this discussion, but if that's the case, and if we are waiting for the town administrator to do these decisions, then why would we be approving budget for a management analysis? And for the either director or manager of parks and rec, I feel like these are also positions that fall within the structure within that org chart that would be determined by the new town administrator. So with with that said, I just want to see both sides of this this discussion. If we are solely handing the responsibility of the organization and the personnel to the new town administrator and willing to hear those budget amendments later on, then why would we be adding these positions? But if we do see value in these positions, which I absolutely do, then what we're saying then is that we don't see the value in economic development. So that's my concerns. But with that said, also, I am a fan of that being available in the professional services. So I'm actually fine with both. I just want to acknowledge both sides of that discussion and maybe how they're they're opposing.
I just want to make sure that that we have the options. I'm not saying go hire one or any of that. We've got some monies in the budget. We just heard it. So there's stuff there to work with. It comes up. That's all.
And this is Jude again. I can also add that position and you can see that in our budget on December 8th does not mean we have to fill that position. So your preference, if you feel strongly about it, I can certainly add it in. The professional fees would still be there. I had visited with Crystal a little bit about what, you know, making sure those that $60,000 was there. But if we would also like to add that position in, we can add it in there. Again, it does not have to be filled if the new town administrator chooses not to do that.
I would like to see that really because economic development is the core of the values and vision that we we put together for our community. So eliminating that, I think sets a a direction that might not coincide with what what we were envisioning Wellington to be. So at least crunch the numbers, let us see it. I mean, there's no harm in that. And I appreciate that offer.
Certainly. And if the position's filled mid-year or somewhere down the road, that's, but we'll put it in. I'm making a note, we'll put it in and the numbers that you see, if I get into, you know, if I if I think it's going to be too stressful on the general fund, I will let you know.
Okay, sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, I want to go ahead. I had one additional question on a subject that we had not looked at. I'm flipping through the budget trying to find it. Do you feel in light of recent events that monies allocated for legal fees for the town attorney are appropriate? Because there's certainly been a number of recent actions which are a little, well, to my mind, a little more unusual. And I didn't know if we've revisited that on in that area to see if that's currently appropriate.
I will take a look at that and let you know. I'm making a note. Again, certainly some of your issues that have been up and anytime you have staff changing over at the level that we do as well. So let me let me go back. I want to look at like 18, 19, 20 before I just give you a good answer.
Yeah, let's see the climbing on that. Okay, anyone else?
The other question I have is, and this might be the 15,000 for election. I knew that I know that we had discussed the fact with the potential of citizen initiatives coming up and the need to hold elections, we needed to make sure that we were allocating enough to handle that. Is that the 15,000 that I'm seeing budgeted for elections or would we need to add a separate item in for the budget?
I'm looking at my draft. Tyler, do you know off the top of your head?
Page 16 of the doc, the packet is what I'm looking at.
I believe I believe that is set just for the elections. We kind of put a number in there. I believe that would be the line item that we would definitely charge that to. And to Tim Whitehouse's question, we did increase the the legal fees to 75,000 from 25,000. So we did see an increase. We just, you know, like you said, it's hard to anticipate.
Something that we talked about briefly previously was doing a cost comparison difference versus a contract attorney versus in-house attorney. Are is that still being explored for future consideration or just future discussion?
We briefly just kind of looked at our peer communities and, you know, what what they pay for in-house. That's something that we could certainly share with the board findings of that if if that's something that the board is interested in.
I think it's worth at least considering or looking at that information as we continue to grow as a community that's definitely a branch of the town that'll have to be added at some point. So even if it may not be in the next year or two, it's something that we should start planning for.
It's Jude again. If you're correct, it's like the positions that we discussed this evening, your building official. So there is definite when you go through and you start reviewing budget, when you have positions that your professional fees start far outweighing what it would cost or the benefit of having that in-house position. Then you start looking at the cost of that position if you have you know, what that position is with benefits and at what point there's always a tipping point of when it becomes more beneficial to have that on in-house. Looking at your budget here, we're that we're premature on that particular position.
Yeah.
Thank you, Judy. I'd like to see that information. Can you send that over to me via email when you have time?
Absolutely. And make a note right now.
Yeah, send it to everybody, Judy.
Okay.
Or anything else?
Yes, I did have a question. It's actually I meant to ask earlier. So thank you constituents for bringing up with the building official, would this position be taking on most or I mean, eventually, hopefully, but would this position within the next year be taking on potentially most, if not all of the work that we are currently outsourcing to SafeBilt?
That is correct. And so Cody, if you're still with us during that transition period, certainly they are not going to be up to speed, you know, overnight. But and that generally takes a couple of months for them to get from here our code with our, you know, neighborhoods, et cetera, et cetera. But absolutely bringing a full time building official, the efficiencies will be, they're right there. They know the customers, they know our codes. So we will see a definite shift in that.
Okay, so I know that's been a concern that has been brought up to me for multiple different areas that I've seen is that it would just be more efficient to have that all be internal town staff versus town staff and an outsourced company. So I just wanted to clarify that that was what that would be. Thank you.
Thanks. This is Cody Bird. I'm sorry, proceed.
I was gonna say, you gotta be careful with bringing in one building official as far as their experience level on commercial, residential and other projects, they may not be able to cover it all. So you're still going to have to outsource some of that depending on the
Plumbing and electrical.
Projects.
Yeah. Go ahead, Cody.
Yeah. Thank you, trustee Jerome, and then thank you, trustee Knutson, because that was the point that I was going to make as well. You know, currently we're contracting with SafeBilt. We have for quite a long time as a town. They do provide a very valuable service and essential service for our growth and development. But they have an entire team of inspectors, plan reviewers. We have a building official and a deputy building official and they have support staff over them. One position is not going to fulfill the town's long term building service needs. What we're hoping to to accomplish is provide a more local presence that would work in in partnership with our existing SafeBilt contract so that we can provide that on, you know, on the scene support that a lot of our new businesses are needing, particularly for commercial construction, to be able to be proactive in helping those businesses out from the building code side. Currently, that entire responsibility falls on myself in addition to the other planning functions as well as zoning and code enforcement. And it's just not sustainable. What this position would be able to do is coordinate directly with the businesses and interface between our permit process and SafeBilt's inspection process to provide a better customer service.
Sounds good. Understand. Anyone else? Well, thank you all for the nice presentation. Looks comprehensive. And I really am encouraged about going back through some of these fund policies. That's good stuff. So it's a good meeting. Appreciate it all. If that's it, I'd like to sign off.
Thank you, sir. And thank you to department heads and Tyler for all your work.
Judy, were you afraid to turn your video on or what? Huh? You're part of the family now.
Little bit.
All right. We'll see you next time, right?
Thank you.
Okay. Bye all.
Thank you very much.